That's working now.
Okay.
We're going live, everyone.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the June sixteenth Curriculum Committee meeting. I apologize for the delay. We were having some technical issues, but now I will call the meeting to order. Does anyone have any additions or deletions from the agenda? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'm moved.
Second.
Oh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approval of meeting minutes. Does anyone have any additions or deletions, changes to the meeting minutes? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve.
So moved. Oh, second.
Oh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we move on to Section B, number one, CTE Local Application. Dr. Breedlove?
Hello?
Did we lose Dr. Breedlove?
He's signing back in.
Okay. Dr. Breedlove, are you there?
Yes, I just, sorry, I got kicked out and I don't know what happened, so I'm back in now.
All right, we're going to Section B, item one, CTE Local Application.
Okay, thank you all. Good morning, and each year at this time, we bring, as requirement to the board for approval, our local CTE plan. And as you all have seen in Board Docs, the application is twenty-two pages long, and you know, there's a lot to digest in that. And that's a good thing, because we also have a lot to be proud of in the area of career and technical education. I hope that the students and parents and community are as proud of our CTE programming as we are, for sure. And I cannot say enough about Brian Davis and our CTE team of coordinators and teachers for the work that they have been able to do over the last several years in growing our CTE program. And I would imagine the board members that are on this call this morning, as well as all of our board members, would agree when I say that I truly believe that our CTE programming is the best in the state and what we are, what we have done over the last several years, as well as the vision for CTE in Union County Public Schools. So rather than kind of going through the twenty-two pages of the document, I've asked Mr. Davis to be with us this morning and to present sort of a synopsis and hit the highlights of the plan and the program this morning. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Davis. So, Mr. Davis, good morning, and the floor is yours.
So, good morning, everybody. It's good to see you again, and I want to thank you for some time today, just to highlight what we have going on in Union County Public Schools CTE. So I want to just first begin by just recognizing our teachers. They have done a phenomenal job over the past year. We are very fortunate, Union County Public Schools, to have some outstanding teachers that really do a lot for our students as far as preparing them for future careers and pathways that they have. I also want to recognize Carolyn Hubler, who is our very first UCPS CTE Teacher of the Year, and she is working today in our culinary camp over at Parkwood High School. She is an outstanding role model for those students. So we are excited to celebrate her, and we're looking forward to seeing how she does at the next level in that competition with the other regions, so, all right, or other districts. So going to begin to kind of overviewing the document that we provided for you. Just a quick overview and some comparisons of numbers that you can see related to enrollment. As you go through that, we've broken that down by grade level and then by program area. And some, one of the things that I hope that you see as you kind of look through that is that you can see that the status of career technical education is strong. We are seeing an overall increase of approximately fifteen hundred students. We have a duplicated enrollment of over thirty-seven thousand students in CTE courses. So what we mean by duplicated is sometimes students take more than one CTE course in a year. So that's where that number comes from. But overall, that's about twenty-three, over twenty-three, almost twenty-four thousand UCPS students have taken career technical education courses, and that's seventy-eight percent of all our middle and high school students. So we're really excited about those numbers, and we really are excited about the growth that we see in our programs and in interest in our, in CTE in general. So as we move forward in the document, to kind of highlight some of the things going on in programs, some continued areas of focus are agriculture education. As you, as you know, AgTech is a very important part of what we're trying to do in that Forest Hills Cluster. And with the support of our, our industry partners, such as the Cooperative Extension Service and Wingate University, I really see that going very well, and I see, I'm beginning to see more and more numbers moving into the high school, into those programs. So we are actually even on top of what we're already doing, looking to, if we can find a candidate, looking to add a half position there to help support some of the growth we're seeing in positions or in courses in agriculture there. So we're really excited about that. On top of that, we've added a middle school program at Parkwood Middle School. That really will be up and running this fall, and that's going to have a different focus, and it's going to focus really on natural resources and environmental and sustainable agriculture, which really aligns well with what Parkwood High School is trying to do with their agricultural program, as well as their clean energy program there. So we're hoping that will have a similar effect in generating more students getting into those pathways at the high school. Continue to have a strong number of students in business and marketing, and that is becoming one of those areas that is always one of our bigger areas. And just one highlight there, I'd like just to shout out is with Scott Clark Toyota. They have a program now called their Scale Program, and we send our interns there. And they had five UCPS seniors who interned with their program, and they have a great curriculum that they worked through. They rebuilt their building over there to have an internship kind of area, where they have those kids have workstations and all that. They were able to develop marketing materials that were used on billboards out for actually real, real work that's happening for them. And they've hired one of our students full-time upon graduation. So that is really a cool thing that I'm seeing out there in our business and marketing, and we really appreciate their support and partnership.
Could, could I interrupt you about that internship with Scott?
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
Are they just in, are the interns getting a taste of all different parts of the auto dealership? In other words, sales, finance, as well as the repair piece of, just in, in the repair area?
So, so yes, sir. So these, this particular internship, what they're doing is they're getting all parts of the business, marketing side, learning about sales, finance, all that, and they're working with other partners outside of Scott Clark to get experience with them as well. As far as automotive, they do learn about the service piece of it, for sure, as part of the business. And we're looking at ways that we can get students and get Scott Clark more involved with the service side with our automotive programs that we have. There's an age requirement there that's a little bit challenging, because they have to be eighteen to turn wrenches, and that's really kind of the little bit of the barrier, but that's something that we're working on. How can we be creative to get them more involved in our automotive programs at the school? So, yeah, it's, it's a great program, and they did a graduation just a few weeks ago, and it was really awesome to see the impact that program had on those students.
Will they start a new class this fall?
Yes, sir. They sure will. They sure will. And they, they said they will take as many as we can send them.
Now, if I remember correctly, Scott Clark does not have its own body shop, or they didn't?
Not that I'm aware of. They do not have a collision center.
So I don't know if, if they have a special relationship with another body shop, but if we, because I know we offer that, that curriculum, that CADA, if we can, can partner up with some, a body shop as well for part of that?
We actually have a partnership where we're working with Capital Auto Group and, and Capital, and the Capital Collision. So we're actually really working to try to build that, provide opportunities for the, for those students as well.
Yeah. What dealership is that?
So that is the Capital Chrysler on Highway seven.
Okay.
Yep.
And were these students specifically from CADA, or were there some from the Forest Hills?
So for the, it's a good question. For this internship, they were, they were multiple schools. There were some from Weddington, Marvin, Cuperson.
Okay.
Parkwood, and I think that may be all for that one. Maybe, maybe one other school, but I don't have that right, but I can find out.
No, it's no big deal, but, but the, the key was it's open to more students than just those in the automotive technology areas at CADA or Forest Hills?
Correct. That is correct.
Great. Thank you.
No problem. So moving on, career development continues to be very important. We'll talk a little bit more about that as I move through the document. Family Consumer Sciences, we have added a Teaching as Profession pilot program at Weddington High School. We have hired a teacher. She is outstanding. I think she's going to really do a great job of building the program. So I'm excited to see how those opportunities provide, are provided for those students and how it grows. Also, just a note on that, our counseling and mental health programs have expanded from two schools to six schools now. It's become very popular, and we're really excited about the numbers of students who are interested in that type of pathway for a career. Health Sciences, of course, with our HSA programs over at the, over at the Monroe, Monroe Cluster, as well as our partnership with Atrium and South Beemont Community College, being able to help make those things happen. And our trade and industry, engineering and industrial education programs, we do have, we have, are working to purchase some new trainers for automotive fundamentals. So this would be like your programs at Parkwood, Sun Valley, Porter Ridge, Beemont, and South Providence. So we're looking at steering and suspension trainers, brake trainers, for these students to really get hands-on, opportunities to learn those things. And these trainers provide opportunities for them to see and really get in there and work on it, where you don't have the body of the car necessarily always in the way. It's a good learning tool. We're also looking at HVAC trainers to help with learning the theory related to that and help with certifications. And we're looking at some manufacturing trainers, such as a Fanic Robot, to help with CPT Certification at CADA. So we're, we're definitely looking to provide as many opportunities and equipment needed for those. Kind of moving forward, and this is really an exciting thing for us, credentials. As you, you all are well aware, Union County Public Schools was number one with students' credentials, students earning credentials in North Carolina with over ninety-two hundred earned. We're excited to say as of-
Would you, would you repeat that again?
So in Union County Public Schools, of course, we were number one in North Carolina for students who have earned credentials with over ninety-two hundred credentials earned by students. So we were really excited about that. This year, I'm excited to say that as of right now, and we're still finalizing the last few that will be working on them the next few days, but right now, we're over eleven thousand, we're a little over, we're eleven thousand one hundred and twenty as of today, and that's where we are. So we're really excited that we had that much of an increase from last year to this year. Now, that ebbs and flows a little bit with the courses that are offered and things that are out there, but proud of our teachers for getting our students prepped and ready to go and be able to pass these certification tests. I'm really excited and proud of our students for, for having the skills to be able to do those certifications.
Could, could you elaborate on the certifications? What, what kind, what industries? Kind of explain what that entails, that involved in that, those industries?
Yeah, yeah, those, those range, there's a huge smorgasbord of things that we offer. So just to kind of give you some ideas, just to name a few. Of course, we offer like firefighter certifications that students can go straight in and go to work there as a firefighter. We offer NCCR certifications for students that want to go into a construction trades. We have CPT certification related to manufacturing. Those are things that we offer. We have CPR certifications, the nursing fundamentals certification. So we have our Certified Nerds Nursing Assistant Certification. We have, we have Adobe certifications, Microsoft certifications that students can get. We have things related to our culinary, such as Serve Safe certifications. So we offer just a wide variety. I'm just listing a few of them, because there is so many. I just don't have time to go over every one of them. But we try to offer as many opportunities as, as possible with the funding that we have, so students have the opportunity to get what, what they can earn.
And the, earning these certifications is significant, because that creates a clear pathway for these students to move into private industry?
Correct, correct. I'll give you an example. One, one of the things, like in our career management courses, so think of students who are coming in early, ninth grade year. They're trying to figure out what they want to do. So these Conover certifications, when you see those on the list, those are geared for soft skills. And industry always tells us how important soft skills are. Well, that is a tangible artifact to show that those students have had some soft skill training. And our, our industry continuously, when we do our needs assessment, tells us that soft skills are extremely important with having those students prepared to come in as an employee.
What are soft skills?
Those are things like where they're learning to be a good communicator. Actually, many of the things on our Portrait of a Graduate, but where they are learning to be a good communicator, work, team working, learning how to problem solve, all those things that they need to be successful in any career that they go into.
People's skills, thinking skills, problem solving, getting along with people, speaking, writing, great.
Correct.
Outstanding. Because there's more to almost all, any position you can name than just knowing technically how to fix this or how to make that. You need to get along with your coworkers, customers, or, and, and think through problem solving to be able to figure out what's wrong or how to fix this or how to do that.
I, I agree a hundred percent, and again, that's why with that Portrait of a Graduate we have, it's so important to get our students to be prepared to get into whatever career they're interested in. So, so kind of continuing on work-based learning has, as we know, COVID really kind of reduced the numbers of students that were able to participate for multiple reasons. But we've seen that rebound over the past year, up to about ninety is where we were this year. I'm looking at, as of right now, applications, we have over a hun, well, over a hundred, a hundred and two as of today, students who are interested in going into some type of internship opportunity. And we're beginning to see more and more companies come on board and want to, are interested in working with an intern because of the needs that they see in the community. So we're really excited to see that. Our work-based learning coordinators do a great job of really getting students prepared to go in that and work with our companies. And that kind of leads into our partnerships. And I didn't list all of our partners, but these are just some very key ones I just wanted to touch on. And we were just fortunate, Union County has such a diverse group of industry partners that are willing to work with us. And I had to definitely mention our, our economic, Union County Economic Development, Union County Chamber. They're great supporters of what we do. Of course, Atrium Health, HSA, we couldn't do our Health Science Academy programs over there without them. Scott Clark Toyota, I've already touched on with their Scale Program and new internship program. If you guys ever get a chance to go over there and see that, that's really a neat program. See how they've just designed their building around our interns. It's really cool to see that.
Where's that now?
Scott Clark Toyota.
Oh, yeah.
State Utilities Contractors, they have been a great partner over the past several years, but they continue to do an equipment rodeo, and they collaborated with Carolina CAT to provide equipment. We had that at Indian Trail Elementary. So we was very fortunate that Dr. Chisholm allowed us to use her school grounds to do that. So it was cool to see elementary kids seeing some of the same things that high school kids were. So that was really fun for them. He also participated in the, Chris Hannah, who's the representative, participated in our Speakers Bureau as well. Of course, the Cooperative Extension Service with AgTech and Wake Up the Ag Day. Wake Up the Ag Day was, they spent a whole week of their time, his staff, Mr. Ballcom, working and preparing and manning the, the Wake Up the Ag Day. It was a huge, huge task for his team, and I'm very grateful for all that they did to help pull that off and make it so successful. McGee Brothers is a new partner that we, we have been beginning working with this year, and they have been very, very open to jumping in and working with us. In fact, Scott Clark and McGee Brothers, we're in talks with them to offer summer camps next year for students, specifically with that company. So really excited about potential opportunities in growing those partnerships. Capital Auto Group, which I've mentioned, that takes interns and works on our advisory board. Crossroads Ford with Dave Gustafson is very good, working with our advisory and allowing students in for field trips, as well as interns. And as always, South Beemont Community College and their career coaches and their team to help support the pathways that we have, and trying to make sure that students have a way to continue learning once they are through Union County Public Schools.
And to kind of- Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir.
Can I interrupt you again? Is that list somewhere in this application on one of these twenty-two pages?
It's, it's, it, they're mentioned in there, but you can also see that list on the document that I provided, Dr. Breedlove.
Yeah, that's been uploaded into Board Docs, Mr. Side. So this, this two pager in there is just the highlights, but those, those partnerships are mentioned.
Oh, okay. I see. Thank you. I was looking at the application.
You're very welcome. So kind of wrapping up full circle, career exploration and touching on Major Clarity. Give you an update on that. We have over seventeen thousand students using Major Clarity now, and, and a testament to our CDCs and the work that they do in the schools to get students using it, as well as our principals, who are really helping promote that in their buildings. We're excited to see that every one of our middle and high schools were recognized by Major Clarity as a power user. So they all got banners to hang up, and what that means is that between forty to fifty percent of all their students, which is double what the average is for other platforms, are using the service, and fifty to sixty percent of those students at least are returning, and we have high levels of staff logins in the building. So we need that. I think we're going to exceed that next year, but students are really finding that that is a useful tool. The data that we're getting out of it is very useful for planning. Administrators, as well as our CT department, are looking at that to help make decisions on what we feel like needs to be the next steps in the building. So it's but a very useful tool. In fact, I've had my son only using it, and it helped us as far as helping him pick his classes next year. So we also, again, have our work-based learning applications on there. It's a great place, and this is where I see a lot of teachers getting there doing it. They like to have their students get in there and build their resumes on it. Really helps guide them through a template to do that. And those, when we had our All-Star banquet where industry came in, those teachers got those kids at Major Clarity. They made their resumes, and they brought those resumes to give the industry when they were there, meeting with them. So it's a cool way to use the service. And our goal is to, for them to have some type of career plan as they move forward. It's, which is nice that that is something that, that they have changes and interests, they can update that plan and it carries with them. And once they graduate, they provide a personal email, they can continue accessing that information as they grow. And then moving into middle schools, I still believe middle schools are a, a very important part of career exploration and career development. We've had two outstanding middle school CDCs that have had a huge impact throughout our district. And because of what the work that they've done, really some great things are happening with, with the data and with the information that they've learned. But we feel there's a need to look at adding a third position. So that is something that we are looking to do in the near future, is hire a third middle school CDC to help allow more time in the buildings than what we can with two. So that is kind of where we are looking to focus that. They are still using the Transfer VR Service. I know some of you guys were able to experience that. Those have been very important for us to add to what we're doing with Major Clarity. And in fact, they're being used right now in the summer camps as well to provide those opportunities. And we're looking at potentially, are they something that we can use to help get students ready for certifications for some of the more advanced SIMs that they have in them moving forward? So we're really excited about that. And we have been looking to continue that middle school Speakers Bureau pilot cooperation with the Workforce Development Task Force to really get students those opportunities to meet industry and learn from the people who work in them what that job is, is like and what kind of opportunities are there for them. So that is a quick overview of, of the plan. If you have any questions, I would be welcome to entertain them.
Other board members have some questions?
I do. I have some questions. Mr. Davis, huge fan, as you know. Thank you for all of this. It's amazing. And let's see, okay. The middle school career development coordinators, right now, like, is it, they're assigned to certain schools?
Yes, ma'am. So right now, what we have them, they're assigned to, they each have five schools, and they, they flow between those on a rotational basis. So what this third one would do is ultimately reduce the number of the day, of, of schools they would have, which would allow them to rotate in those buildings more often. And, you know, we've been working with them and reflecting on that schedule. We do allow flexibility in there if a school needs a CDC for a particular reason. We also want to make sure, one of those schools is South Providence. We want to make sure, that's a really important piece for me, to make sure those students are getting that support. And the CDC that really, she, she that's there really loves that school and really enjoys going there, and that is one school she wants to make sure she stays in.
So, so when they go to the middle schools, are they meeting in groups, or do they meet individually with students?
That's a really good question, because it's a little bit of both. So they're going to do group events. They've done field trips. But they've also been in classrooms. They'll have, they'll cooperate with teachers, and they'll coordinate, go in, and they'll do Major Clarity lessons, or they'll bring the VR goggles in. But they also can use that data if they are strategic and potentially pull in small groups or even individuals, if there's an opportunity to do that. And I'm hoping by adding the third, it will allow more of that, because they're going to be in the building a little bit more often.
So, so if they meet with a middle school student, and then that student decides they want to go into some sort of like trade, is there some sort of coordination with their counseling so that they get a plan going as far as what kind of classes they can take for that?
So the wonderful part about Major Clarity is there's an academic planner in there. It allows you, based on our program of studies, to build a, a complete academic plan from six through twelve. So they go through how to do that with all those students that they meet with, and those students can develop that plan, and then they can use that when they go meet with their counselors, and they can say, this is what I would like to do. This is why I'm interested. It gives them a really great start to have those conversations with their counselor and their scheduling courses.
So that academic planner is like completely linked with all of the courses offered at UCPS? And so in middle school, they could basically do a plan all the way through graduation?
That's correct. And what, what we do, Kim Hayward, who was a rock star with, with Major Clarity, she goes in, and each year she spends time vetting and validating the courses that we have to make sure that what's in the system aligns with the Union County Program of Studies.
And that's not just for a trade. I mean, that could be if they want to go to college, too.
That's correct.
Because Major Clarity covers both.
And it, and it does have all the courses in it, not just CTE.
Okay. Um. When they want to do like the College and Career Promise CTE Pathway, is there certain counselors that handle that, or is it they just go to their school counselor and they help them with that?
So this is part of where the partnership with South Beemont is really important. So the CDCs and school counselors definitely are important people to have those, some of those conversations. But South Beemont also provides those career coaches, and those career coaches are really the ones that can help them through that process with getting into a CCP course and making sure they're in the right pathways. And that's what South Beemont wants. They want those students to be in a, a CTE certificate pathway that they can matriculate through.
So if they want to do that program, they would contact SBCC, the career coach there?
Yeah, and they come into the school, so they would, I would say, either meet with their CDC or counselor first, and they can help you get in contact the, the career coach that comes on campus.
Okay. And then internships, they find out about those through work-based coordinator, did you say?
Typically, what we do is they can talk to their CDC if they have some questions at the school, and then they can reach out, and then either the, the student or the CDC will reach out for the student through the work-based learning coordinator to be able to get information to the student. And they meet, the work-based learning coordinators meet with every, personally with every one of those students that are interested.
Okay. And my last question is, I know you do the expo where people can go there and see all the different CTE programs, and, I mean, it has everything, not just trade. And I think we talked about this, do we try to offer transportation? Like if they went to a high school, and then they could get a bus to get over to the expo?
So that would be, we haven't done that in the past. That might be a Dr. Breedlove question there a little bit. But, well, we typically have that on a Saturday.
Right.
Dr. Breedlove, I don't know if that's something that you thought about, doing that. But, you know, if that's a way to do that, I think it could be something I'm definitely looked at. We're also looking at potentially this year, doing a middle school career fair as well. The middle school CDCs have already got a date, I believe, in February at the ACT Center to do something like that, which is brand new. But that would be a cool way to really engage the middle school students with industry as well, so.
And would that be on a Saturday?
I'd have to look at the date. She just got that date. Uh, I'd have to look at the date. She just got that date confirmed, and I honestly have not had a chance to look that far out what day of the week it is yet.
I mean, it'd be cool like they did Ag Day and the elementary kids got to go out. It'd be cool if we could do like field trips for the middle schools to have everyone go.
Yeah, I believe the plan is that to get them all, to bring kids from all, but I believe they've got them in about two hour blocks is what they're thinking about throughout the day. So I believe it's during the school day.
Okay.
But I don't want to tell you exactly what day of the week it is without having an opportunity to look it up.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And we certainly could look at the transportation side of of that as well and and what we might do if there's that need. I certainly want to look at that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Davis. Do you have any questions?
Yeah. Answer a quick question. I know Ms. May mentioned about the a middle school agriculture day. Um, but have we ever done and and we may have, and it may have been mentioned, I apologize if it has. But like a CTA CT CTE day for maybe fifth graders where each group could represent maybe on the field at a um, at a school and they can begin early getting exposed and building an interest to being a part of those programs?
So I most, we do a fifth grade career awareness survey. Uh, that's well, the state does that. So we look at some of that data that's coming out and typically happens is that a lot of those elementary schools begin visiting the middle and high schools. So they're getting some of the exposure at some of the schools. Uh, you know, some of that data goes directly to the states. We may not see all that at times, but those some of those things are happening. But I think that's something that we could definitely look at as a possible career awareness activity.
Yes, sir. And and also, I think, um, and that's something, and this is something we can think about as well as far as getting our community to help because our students who are in the school, they are part of community, different activities, different programs, churches and things like that. And we need the community to really back this program. If we want to eliminate a lot of the, I I think it has a lot to do with helping to eliminate a lot of the disparity and challenges that some of our communities have. If our community can really back you all, back us up one hundred percent in making sure that parents know about this so they can advocate for their children and as well as encouraging those kids to be a part of this. This is their way out of whatever their 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 underserved privilege disadvantages may be. So whatever we can do, I think we can put together some things. I know Ms. Sarah and I have been talking about some things with East Elementary, that community and what have you. So this is a great program. I'm telling you, this is this is awesome stuff, the work that you guys are doing with this. And we just want to make sure that you all are supported one hundred percent. So um, that that's this is awesome.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you very much. And we're definitely always looking to find ways to improve and expand on what we're doing because my staff and I firmly believe that it is this is important work that we're doing is getting students ready to be successful members of our society. So we're really excited about it and I look forward to seeing where we can go over the next year.
Mr. Davis, I have a final question. Do we have the ability or are we currently tracking our CTE graduates to see how many are going directly into industry that they studied or industry at all and versus how many are going to college? And then perhaps into the military, but basically a success rate for our CTE students that are going on into their profession. Do we track any of those kinds of numbers?
We, you know, once they leave Union County Public Schools, it's tough to kind of keep up with them at times. Things change. We do a we do a senior survey to kind of get a little bit of information from them. Uh, these are typically students who are concentrators who have made it to that status. Um, but you know, those are those are if we those are kind of get to that point to see, uh, sometimes those things change. And then after that, back down the road two, three years, it's difficult to see where they are sometimes.
Oh, sure.
But but that that does give us a little bit of that when we look at that senior concentrator survey.
Yeah, I I guess what I was curious to know is how many of our students are graduating from the CTE programs with a job in hand? In other words, they're going, they're graduating high school and they're going straight to their chosen course of study with a job. You know, graduating with a job. I just.
Yeah.
We had the ability to track that. Okay. All right. Uh, this is an action item, so I will need a motion to move this application forward to the full board for approval.
A motion to move the CT application forward to the full board.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Davis. I I wonder if you wouldn't mind hanging around for our discussion of the Career Center. I think your input would be invaluable.
Yes, sir. We'll do so. And again, thank you all for your support.
Thank you. All right, go to item two, digital resource renewals for twenty-two, twenty-three. Dr. Bree Love?
Yes, also in Board Docs is the memo listing for uh, really of our our most major resources that we use. These are all renewals uh, from years past, as you can see. Uh, and so um, we've done a a pretty good job over the last three to four years of taking these resources and really getting uh, them during a certain, the the renewals during a certain month because they were spread out all all across the calendar. And so um, I appreciate Ms. Remmer uh, and and working with our vendors to to get these on track for really the summer cycle renewal when we we know our funds and and be able to work through that rather than sort of piecemealing across the across the calendar. But uh, we have Renaissance, we have Dreambox, we have Edmentum, uh, which is Apex, and that's the credit recovery. And of course, Eye Ready, uh, all of these products we have used um, in the last several years for renewal. Um, any questions on that?
Questions, board members? If no questions, well, is this is also an action item. We'll look for a motion to recommend approval to the full board.
I'll make a recommendation, take it to the full board.
Second.
Yes, sir. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All righty. Item number three, sole source purchase.
Yes, this is a sole source, but it's also a renewal of a product we've continued to use over the last several years. And this is for uh, our theater department and it will use Title IV funds um, uh, which we have for uh, seven little, almost seventy-six hundred dollars. Any questions on um, on this product, Drama Teacher Academy resources?
Any questions? This is also an action item, so if there are no questions, I'll look for a motion to uh, recommend approval to the full board.
A motion to recommend approval to the full board.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, item number four. Um, here's my uh, thought on this and I'd like the uh, other two board members um, on the calls, input on this. We have, we have just heard today how exciting and state-leading forefront in CTE area. I think there is an opportunity to even take it to a next level. And oh, in in my mind, a career center is the next level because of, first of all, at CADA, you have, uh, there may be students that are reluctant to transfer from their home school. And we have a lottery, so we're not able to meet all the demand in certain subjects. And then if you stay at your home school, not all, it's not feasible for all academies to be offered at every school. So there might be, the you might have an interest in the culinary academy, but you're at um, Weddington and it's only being offered, the closest would be Porter Ridge. So you have a transportation issue. You have to get there on your own. With a career center, as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Breedlove, you basically are staying at your home school for core classes. But the CTE portion, you would transport to a central career center for those classes and then be returned to your home school. So it doesn't require you to change schools. It's not a full-blown magnet school. But it is a centralized complex with transportation provided to enable any student at any school to take advantage of all of our wonderful CTE offerings. Now, that would not negate the need for, you know, whatever academies are ongoing at the schools, but would be, as I see it, a supplement. And we did envision, anyway, the transformation of the Venus Street facility, the old bus garage, into a centralized automotive technology. Moving, we we'd had discussions about moving from the automotive technology from CADA to a centralized location. So to utilize that specific area of campus facility. So I would, um, I would like the input of the other board members. I'm I'm first of all, is there is there a demand for a facility such as this? And uh, what would be the mechanics of going through the process to determine? Is there the demand? What curriculum would be offered? How, where and how are we going to do it? Uh, you know, the whole planning process. And so I didn't, you you know, there may be an interest in curriculum committee taking that on because we have Sarah who would also represent facilities. We have spit. We could have an an accordance facilities. Or it could be a special committee just for this purpose that spans after we, you know, make a decision or whatever move forward. So I'm kind of looking for a discussion of um, your thoughts on the uh, opportunity for a career center and how we go about next steps? So I want to open it up to everybody for your thoughts and comments. And Mr. Davis, maybe we should start with you and um, in your experience, you're the CTE guru. Um, do you envision, I I mean, do you feel like there is an opportunity to ex even expand uh, our CTE capabilities with such a a career center? Uh, do you feel like, first of all, do you feel like there's a demand before we go into the nuts and bolts? I I'd I'd appreciate your thoughts as well.
Well, uh, you know, I appreciate that. The uh, you know, as I look into it, uh, one of the challenges that we have in Union County Public Schools with CT is definitely uh, facilities. Uh, so there's, you know, not all schools have facilities to have every type of program there. And then there's also funding to be able to fund, we couldn't fund, have every program at every school. So um, you know, one of the things, as you mentioned, the Venus Street, looking at potentially, there was a discussion of automotive service collision being there as well as construction trades. And that would allow, that would allow students to have transportation access for those high demand, high need uh, employment opportunities that are there. Where, you know, you you look at many of our schools now do not have a facility to be able to do those type of programs because of the things that are needed there. So that's, to me, that's where we have some of these really highly technical programs that are have equipment-specific uh, things that would need to have that program there. That's where a facility like that could be very beneficial to students and transportation was provided.
And I know there are a lot of computer-based coding or what have you, um, and I'm not sure what other. But classes that are in such high demand at CADA that there's always a um, lottery of significantly more people apply that are able to get in. So I'm wondering if that could be kind of the indicator for demand for classes in that area that we can fill fulfill as well.
Yeah, I I could see that. That is definitely one of those. So those are getting into that highly technical. You know, you're thinking about a networking engineering type class where you need an extra space to have all that equipment set up in there or you know, you've got manufacturing labs set up where you need space to do robots and and manufacturing equipment. That's those are important things that you would need, you know. One other one is like our cosmetology program, you know, that's, that's all convicted at center. That could be something that maybe would go under there and allow students to be able to provide transportation as well to expand those opportunities. So I definitely see, I definitely see the value in that, um, as a former teacher years ago, where I as an agriculture teacher, where I had some of my students that participated in that, they felt like and it was very valuable for them to have the opportunity to travel and go take those courses.
Uh, Dr. Breedlove, please join the conversation. What what do you think about, again, board members, let's talk about the mechanics of the decision-making process? Do, who do we want and how do we want to do it to be responsible for seeing if we can take this to the next step?
I mean, the I I completely think this would be a great idea. But I think like as from like what I know from the facility side, the reason why it was going to be to renovate Venus Street was because then transportation, the same kids who ride the bus to CADA could then just take the bus to Venus Street to do that. But then they wouldn't be back and forth at their home school. I mean, they would basically, right? Because then there, they wouldn't have any way to get back to their home school to take their core classes. So would they take their core classes virtually at Venus Street?
Uh, the way that's typically worked in the past, and this is, you know, going in the Wayback Machine, when I first started teaching uh, before the CADA opened, they would take half of their courses um, in the morning, let's say, at their home school. So they would ride the bus to their home school and take their social studies class and an English class, for example, in that semester. And then for the afternoon, they would catch a bus after that second block, then ride over to uh, the Career Center, maybe grab their lunch first and then and then go uh, go to the Career Center for their afternoon classes. And and many students finished up over there and um, and then, Mr. Davis, correct me if I'm wrong, did they ride the bus back to take home or did they go home from there?
I I believe.
Some of them did if they needed bus transportation. Others who drove just went ahead and left from the Career Center.
That's that's right. That's that's the way I understood it, sir.
Or they started their day at the Career Center and then came to, back when I was at Sun Valley, for example, they came back to Sun Valley for their afternoon classes if they were on sports teams and just stayed at the school after that. So that's kind of how the schedule worked. And then many students took advantage of that op opportunity. But you know, it comes down to, you know, the obviously the expense of transportation because each school would need that bus uh, to go back and forth. Uh, and of course, the facilities expenses uh, to um, upgrading the facility that is identified.
Dr. Breedlove, do you, do you have any, I'm sorry, my.
No, go ahead.
Do you have any thoughts on the mechanics of this decision-making process and who should be involved in it? It sounds like we got a couple of different committees that it could each, uh, you know, if you got down to it, could be involved. And so that's why I had the idea of asking uh, Chairperson Merrill to appoint a committee that kind of represented everybody with just this purpose. Um, you know, having one of our ongoing committees throwing it in their lap. I I don't know. Uh, again, that's what I'm I'm looking for some some thoughts. But I think it this, I think we've already, we're already hearing there's demand. Uh, whether we can finances, staffing, using that facility, any number of questions. But I just want to, I I, what I'm looking for is kind of the how we're going to, you know, study the feasibility and propose to move this forward.
Can I interrupt for a second before you answer, Dr. Breedlove? Uh, but I mean, what the plan was, which was on the bond request, was to already jumpstart that to basically renovate Venus Street. I mean, I think part of the design fees were in the list of what we asked the county for and they didn't approve it. So I mean, I felt like we already had a plan going in terms of doing that at Venus Street. But obviously now the issue is going to be they didn't even let it go on the bond for a vote.
Correct. So we're back to square one, basically. Which, which, I mean, which of course, I don't think it's a good thing, but if we decide the scope of what we want to do with Venus Street is going to be expanded. Is going to be expanded to more of a career center. Then uh, we have the opportunity, I mean, that whole 10 year plan is scrambled now. So I think we're, we have the, we're called an opportunity to start with a clean slate. As far as career center, what we're gonna do with Venus Street, what we're gonna do with automotive technology and the trades, what have you.
Um, if I could, I mean, when we look at it, um, Mr. Davis, can you, when? When was the career center dissolved? I guess that's the right term we use. Do, do you remember?
Oh goodness, Dr. Breedlove, you may have to help me with that. I'm thinking back, it's been. Gosh, uh, see.
Well, was Cata built about around two thousand four?
Yeah, it's, I'd have to look. It, it was, it's been, I'm prob- I would say it's probably been between fifteen and twenty years ago. Does that sound pretty close, Dr. Breedlove?
It does. Uh, you know, I'm thinking, I'm, I'm thinking uh, around sixteen, seventeen, eighteen years ago.
Okay. And, and the reason I ask that, because listening to you all mention about how students would go. We think about, Union County has grown tremendously since then. And during that time, the number of schools that we had have increased. And so um, it, it's a lot of really counting up the cost and really looking at the pros and cons. It is much needed and I am an advocate for it. Um, I guess just trying to figure out how, how it can work. And just putting together, putting together a plan so that it, it can work and really, as mentioned, counting up the costs and really looking at how we can. Allow these kids to still uh, be a part of, of these programs. Um. I mean, I don't even know where to start.
I mean, that's the biggest stumbling block, isn't it? Because the county is so big. If it was like a quarter of the size. We could make Forest Hills like a amazing high school slash career center and then have the kids all bus there. But I mean, it's so far, like that if you were, I mean, I don't even know how we would do that because it's, you know, literally on one edge of the county.
Right.
Well, and I will just add that there are some districts that do have career centers. You guys uh, looking at that, maybe visiting some of those districts, just seeing what they do. Might be a, a good way to kind of get started to see how they handle that. Uh, I was at Lincoln County School System not too long ago and they have a facility where, you know, they have their automotive and many of their highly technical programs. Their nursing program, all under one roof and they travel like that. So that could be an opportunity just to kind of maybe see what others are doing there.
Do, do any counties ever, ever work in conjunction with the community college to have sort of like a collaborative trade center?
Yeah, and and of course, like South Bima has worked, they have a bay, they have a bay in Cata right now that they use for, for them to teach automotive classes. And so we do some of that too, but yeah, some of that kind of thing could be a possibility. I definitely see that out there. Um. You know, it's, it's a, it's one of those things that is, it's, there's a lot, I know there's a lot of challenges to it and whatnot. But it's one of those things that uh, I, I definitely also see the benefits to as well. And uh, I know, I know industry, I hear, I hear it all the time from industry as well, why don't they have a career center? So I feel like industry input may be another important factor that you guys are thinking about what would be needed in something like that.
All right, let me move this along. What do you think about, I would be glad to talk with uh, Ms. Merrill. And if she concurs, at least initially to study the feasibility. And to confirm the demand that the curriculum committee take that on. And then look, you know, once we, we have confirmed. Through industry, Mr. Davis's resource and, and staff and whoever. Then um, ask board leadership how, you know, get their input. Uh, since Ms. Merrill couldn't, couldn't make it with us today, to get board leadership's uh, thoughts. On a special committee specifically for this purpose. Or perhaps the responsibility split among committees, or spit takes it, or facilities take it, or we take. How, how, how about that?
Well, how is this different than the plan for Venus Street?
We don't, we don't know that it is, to be sure. But right now Venus Street plans, as they were, are scrambled because they're not going to be on the bond. The, the.
That's always gonna be the stumbling block is the, where do we get the money for something like that? I mean, do you feel like this idea is different than what the idea was for Venus Street, Dr. Breedlove?
Uh, well, it just depends on the scope of what, what, you know, what we would propose or what is feasible, right? You know, with Venus Street, it is, uh, the size of that building uh, does have constraints. And so if we are gonna move automotive there, maybe construction trades or whatever we find is the most feasible. Uh, certainly, we could build a proposal for that and then uh, working with uh, facilities and, and, and finance. What would this cost uh, to, to re-outfit that facility to make it usable for students? And, and, and then what are the transportation costs for the entire district to get in those programming? And maybe looking at, you know, what you could then do, okay, that's, that's the first year or two years. But what does it look like 10 years from now? And, and then how do we continue to, to build that out? So that it includes a lot more programming uh, than what the initial phase. And so I'm seeing it as a sort of a multi-phase, if we're not going to go with a brand new facility that would house all those phases, right? Those, those programs that we would put in there. So uh, to say, you, I think that the, the Venus Street building. Would have a smaller scope, for sure.
Oh yeah, we'd have to, definitely have to revisit expanding the, the, the current footprint. Not only just upfitting it to move automotive technology over there, but an expansion as well. Would, would be beyond the design that we had hoped to have on the bond for this fall. I, I mean, that's, that's what I envisioned, like you're talking about, Dr. Breedlove, that this grows beyond just that. To have the other CTE, CTE curriculum that's in such high demand available as well.
How big is that space, Mr. Sides?
I'm not a good judge of square footage, but there's, oh, what, is there three bays out there or four bays? There's a little, I'm sorry?
Yeah, I believe what we were looking at was, I believe there's, I believe there's, you go, they drive straight through. So with cars, you know, for buses, so with pigs, with cars, I think you're looking at maybe four, four or five bays. And then the collision being kind of one of those, the, the extra bay plus potentially adding a paint booth over there or moving in Cata.
Yeah, and then there's some office space that facilities um, utilized. So the existing footprint, you, you're gonna be doing good if you want to have a super uh, automotive repair and collision. That's gonna take up, I'm correcting if I'm wrong, that's gonna take up the existing footprint. So I think you're looking at more than just a refit of the building. I think you're looking at an expansion, of which they have room because all the buses are gone. So where do we go?
I, I have another question. So if we did something like this, so back when there was a career center. Did all the high schools still have all the CTE programs back then?
Yeah, that's a good question too. So, you know, if you're gonna, that kind of goes into the staffing. Uh, but some of those programs were, you know, would be centralized at that point. So, you know, something like uh, construction trades may come out of Lunder High School or Hartwood High School and be at this facility. So that all students have equal access to it, is what you'd be looking at. So that would be basically repurposing or re, or reallocating and moving those, some of those staff members out there to that.
So you can have some economies of scale. So I think we're kind of struggling with who's gonna have the responsibility to see if this is feasible to move to the next step. Is that fair to say?
I would say the struggle is gonna be the financial one because I don't see how.
That's, yeah, that's always gonna be the case. Making the case to build a new school.
But I mean, or it doesn't make sense just to pay for transportation, which I don't think we could ever do that because we wouldn't have enough drivers is the problem. You know, even if we had a money tree out back, how do we hire enough people to do all the driving and keep the CTE pro-? You know, even if we could, this would be a quicker route to just provide the transportation. So kids from other schools could then get to the schools that have the programs. But like, how do we have the manpower to do that?
I think that's a very good point, and that's one of the things, we would have to list the advantages and the obstacles. And um, you know, as, as part of a, I mean, a, as part of a feasibility study, okay? Here's the advantages, here's the, the challenges, here's the price tag.
So, and I think if Mr. Davis could tell us, what are the most in demand, like if you could pick and start from scratch, let's say. Like what would you have, you know, come up with something like that just as a starting point? Like what do you feel like would make the most sense if that's what we're gonna do?
Uh, well, my question was more was who's gonna do that? Mr. Davis comes up to it and do you say, come back to the curriculum committee? Or who, who, who would you like to take the initial lead on this? To see if we start to build a case to do it is more my question. The, the mechanics of the decision making process. I mean, I'm fine with curriculum doing it because you're, you're in uh, also on uh, facilities. I'm also on spit, so we got a little bit of everybody's touch in it.
Yeah, I just feel like, and I could be wrong, but it seems like, Mr. Davis, you already worked with facilities. To help with the whole plan to, to begin with when it was gonna be to renovate Venus Street. So maybe facilities? I don't know.
I would, I would just say, if we're gonna uh, go down this road, um, are we, are we talking about Venus Street? Are we talking about a, another facility? Because what might be the most demand? That Mr. Davis might find as the most demand for a centralized, maybe if it was a, if it was a, a brand new facility. The, the pathways might be, the courses might be different than what the Venus Street building would offer. That's definitely an automotive uh, facility, right? And um, so we're, we're gonna be limited um, to, to that. And like I said, maybe construction trades. I think Mr. Davis mentioned um, uh, industry um, um. In, in, in doing some of that. But um, if we're saying, okay, the whole scope of CTE. What are those five or six or seven things that would be prioritized? I think identifying that is gonna be important on what we're talking about, because we can do either or. And say, okay, if we're talking Venus Street, here's what would be centralized from uh, CTE's perspective. This is the most demand from across the, the district where we see that we would have the most students signing up for those programs. When it comes to that facility versus, let's say, the new transportation and there's space or, or whatever uh, over there for a new building. Or wherever that is, that could be something different and, and these 10 things could be listed in priority. Of the most demand that would be centralized and pulling out of individual schools to, to get students there, right?
I'm sorry, Mr. Sides, I was just gonna say also, I think an important part of that discussion would be, if, if you look at something like that, be. What are the demands that you see in industry? You know, those are, those are really, those to me are really important to make sure that we would put programs that would meet the demands that industry sees as far as employability. So that's why I think those would be very, be very important to kind of look at those as well as student interest.
Well, that's what I was gonna say. How many students do we know that don't participate in these programs? Because they don't have the transportation. And, you know, if so, like where are they, like where are we seeing that the most to try to figure out that?
Yeah, the demand. Okay, so how about, let me make this suggestion. I will get with board leadership on this question. And how about, Dr. Breedlove, you discussed with Dr. Houlihan and Mr. Davis? Maybe you could powwow at some point. And we get a clearer picture of who's going to, and I, I hate to dump this just all on staff to come up with a feasibility study for this. Um, but kind of mechanics of the, the best way to see if there's potential to move this forward. And what it might look like and who's, who's gonna be responsible. Is that, does that sound like a, a good plan? Did I lose you?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I, I was typing, uh, just to kind of make sure I, I know what the to do is. And so yes, um, I will talk to uh, uh, certainly talk with uh, Dr. Houlihan and, you know, it looks like developing a proposal. Um, for moving forward, um, and what that.
The mechanics of the decision making process to see if this is a viable opportunity. And if it is, it may only be at the scope of what we can do with Venus. It's like you said, it might be, you know, that would be step two. Okay, what do we want this to look like? What, what do we need it to look like to meet the demand that's out there? And, and who's gonna be responsible for, you know, walking this through the phases? But, you know, first of all, who's gonna determine if there's a demand for this and it's, it's feasible? And what staff's opinion is how the mechanics of this should work as far as the decision making process. That make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Is that, is that okay with John and Sarah? You feel comfortable with that?
Yeah. And I, and honestly, and also, I would, I would love if there are individuals who are listening, maybe former students to come. And speak at some of the board meetings and just kind of share their experience to kind of give people an insight of, of uh. How it impacted their lives and, and the opportunities that it afforded to them. Because even as we're talking about it and we know that it's, it's a great opportunity. It, it's even better when we hear from those who have gone through the process and the experience to share. So that we can, in hopes, get community to back us up in supporting this effort to help uh, continue transforming the lives of these kids.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Good point. Very good point. Always love, love to hear from success stories. So Dr. Breedlove, what I'll do is you uh, catch up to me when you have an opportunity to discuss this. With the appropriate staff and, and what you all feel like. You know, how do we determine, where do we go from here, if anywhere?
Okay.
Okay. And I will talk with uh, our board leader on their thoughts on a, a potential path forward. And we'll report back to everyone. How's that? Okay?
Good. Thank you.
Uh, I see, closing items. Items to be taken to the full board include items one, two, and three from B. Our next meeting to be determined if a need in uh, July. And with that, I will uh, look for a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second.
On favor, aye. Thank you for the discussion.
Happy Father's Day, gentlemen.